Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Do you have the motion? Oh, we have one board member via Zoom. I'm sorry, that's why we have all the technology going on here, so I apologize. But, so we'll be taking roll call votes so that we can record that correctly for the record. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held November 9th, 2020?
So moved.
Second. A motion is second. I'll take roll call now. Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker.
Aye.
Board member Tulkey. Board member Mickelson. Aye. Those are approved. Now, we have four people signed up to address the school board. The first three are non-agenda items, so you will each get five minutes. It's a total of 15 minutes when it's non-agenda items. So when you step, when I call your name, please step up to the mic, say your name and your address, and then you'll have five minutes. And when you have about a minute left, Carly will signify, and then 30 seconds so that you get a heads up when your time's running out. And then she'll let you know when your time's up. So first, I'll start with Jennifer Albig. If you'd step up and say your name and address, please.
Jennifer Albig, 1120 West 15th Street. Thank you for your time tonight and your service with the Sioux Falls School District. I just want to take this opportunity to share that myself and other teachers that I've reached out to are feeling overwhelmed, stretched thin, defeated, and voiceless. This is especially happening at the elementary level. We teach students every day to ask questions, speak up for yourself and others, and to be open to discussions without different ideas and opinions. However, we are feeling that we can't practice what we teach with our own employer. Some have used the Let's Talk platform anonymously or with their contact information. Some have emailed school board members or the superintendent. I know I have done both. However, Let's Talk and emails can be overlooked or not replied to. I think teachers would like to have the opportunity to speak at board meetings during public input. However, some feel that they will be scrutinized for doing so. We would like to have more openness and willingness to speak and be heard from those working in our district. Many teachers I've heard from want to express feelings, concerns, and ideas. Yes, we have opinions on how things are being handled because we are the ones in the classrooms. Our input should matter. I think myself and others just want to feel heard and validated as the people that you hired and trusted to teach the students in our district. In the upcoming board meeting, should a teacher come to speak during public input, please presume positive intentions. I hope that we truly can listen, talk, and work together through this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Michael Grismer.
My name is Michael Grismer, and I'm a student at RHS. My address is 4813 West Mace Pass. And before I begin, I would like to say that it's a privilege to speak with all of you today, and I appreciate the time you were taking to listen to me. Speaking today was motivated by frustration. The current environment from COVID-19 is unsafe for students and staff in our schools. I'm here to ask that district to take more action and have more transparency during this pandemic. COVID-19 is out of control in the state, and the lack of policies and action at local, state, but most importantly, at a district level, are evident of this. In an article from the Argus Leader just about a week ago, South Dakota's per capita deaths are among the world's highest rates, and quote, "as bad as it gets in the entire world." But more specifically, the Sioux Falls School District, in the Sioux Falls School District, the number of people out on close contact has been staggering. On the first day of school, we were at half-capacity, and I was close contacted to someone with positive with the virus. The amount of empty deaths continues to add up and will probably be exacerbated with the upcoming break. That number is even after the Sioux Falls School District removed the mandatory close-contact quarantine. If too many people are getting exposed to a deadly virus, maybe that is an indicator that our COVID situation is not where it should be. The policies put in place by the district directly impact the numbers in our community. If you want to have lower numbers, implementing stricter policies in schools can make our situation easier on students and staff. With less students out, it means more students engaged in in-person learning. On the other hand, teachers are tired and exhausted, and the high number of absences are making it harder for teachers to adapt to both virtual and in-person teaching. Also, with teachers out, substitutes are not able to provide the same compelling lesson plans interning to students. However, our teachers are resilient and are doing the best they can with the circumstances presented. Despite having family members infected with COVID, losing loved ones to COVID, or being infected themselves, my teachers have been working hard and providing me and my classmates with the best possible education. I am grateful, but I wish the district was working just as hard to protect them as they do educate our students. Personally, I'm increasingly more afraid each day of getting COVID. Researchers from Georgia Tech and Stanford say that gathering of 50 people in Minnehaha County has a 90% risk of someone having COVID. Given the population in our schools, this is starting to turn into not whether I will get COVID, but when. For some students, getting COVID-19 could seriously put family members at risk in the same household. With going to one of the most crowded schools in the state, social distancing is not possible, as in some areas, students are shoulder to shoulder. To add, with lenient mask policies and with a portion of students not wearing masks properly or having one at all, our schools are breeding crowds for COVID. However, as a school board, you can have the power to act. Masks have been identified as key preventing the spread and a mask requirement protecting wearing and the others. Especially if the district continues in-person learning after the break, masks would be instrumental in helping slow the spread in our schools and community, especially with COVID-19 so out of control. We have reached the moment where we have to value public health over personal choice. If we have dress code policies that, over the use of hats for safety reasons, we should have a mask policy to prevent death. But more importantly, as a district, we need more transparency. With a quick Google search to try to find the Sioux Falls School District's dashboard, the COVID Resource Center, along with a picture of the SFSD checklist, shows up. Upon clicking on the different options, all it shows is the name of a school and a green-colored school symbol. There's no caption or legend that states what threshold each level meets. It only gives a vague one-sentence answer in the legend of what each stage will look like. This does not show when or how we will meet each level or gives specifics to each school's current COVID situation. At the perspective of parent and student, they are unaware of current COVID situation despite whether it is being managed or not. Having a more transparent dashboard is a key solution because it better informs the community on the district's situation and can help base people's decisions. The school district is hiring college students to be substitute teachers because so many staff members are gone. Based on this and COVID numbers in Sioux Falls, there's no school that should be at a green level. Overall, there's a few aspects that need to change. First, we need more action from the Sioux Falls School District to protect staff and students. Second, we need to completely rethink our COVID-19 dashboard to make it considerably more transparent and clear on how COVID is in our district. To conclude, I will leave you with words from the Sioux Falls School District's own mission statement. It is to educate and prepare each student to succeed in a changing world. Yet, how can we teach this to our students when the Sioux Falls School District is unable to adapt to a changing world of a pandemic? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And final, from the non-agenda topics, is Suzanne Welter Santini. Santili, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Welter, and I'm a citizen in Sioux Falls, and I've worked in the medical community for 20 years. And I just have one simple question. We all know that mitigation measures will help to get rid of this virus and dampen it down. I don't know what I can do as a citizen, and I'm more than happy to cooperate, to be a collegial member and work together, but we need to implement stronger restrictions. I know the numbers and the reporting is, I don't know what, I don't want to criticize, but it's misleading. And it's actually not truthful because I've told, I told a friend this week they didn't know their principal was even out of school. And I don't have kids in school, and it was just something I heard at the hospital. And that can all kind of be, I think, brought into more control. We've never been here before in our lifetime. And it's a great opportunity to help one another and implement the same guidelines that we're using here tonight in IPC, enforce them at school. I mean, and then we can stay open. But I just, it's very sad for me. It's very disturbing from a medical standpoint. So I know that you're all, you know, working for us, but right now, I feel the frustration of parents, coworkers, people in our church, just the entire community. And I want everyone to be able to kind of see things on the same level, if we can, just to get through this. So my question, my bottom-line question is, can we reinforce stricter guidelines in school? Now that we know they help, and now that we're in such a devastating place that we've never been. This weekend, we had more COVID deaths than the entire last year of flu deaths. And it's not going down, it's going up. And Dr. Stavum, I look to you because I know you came from the Northwest, in the Washington area, and they were hit the hardest first. It's, you know, we're all kind of working through this one day at a time. But we have to change things to remain in school and to keep everybody safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And all three of you, I'd encourage you to stay towards the end for our reports if you, because I think there'll be some information that you'll all find helpful and informational to you as well, so please do. Thank you for your input. Fernando Bula, yours is signed up for reports, so you can either speak now or you could wait till the report time. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on then. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Board member Parker.
Aye.
Board member Ryder.
Aye.
Board member Baker. Board member Tulkey. Sorry, he might not have heard me. Board member Tulkey. Can you hear him? He's giving the thumbs up. He can't get his mic going. And board member Mickelson. Aye. Now to the good news report. Thank you, Deanne.
Good evening to you all. We've probably all heard the research that says a single most important factor in student success is putting a highly qualified teacher at the head of the class. And we're lucky to have 1,850 such teachers influencing the lives of students every day. And while teachers would love to be absolutely everywhere, giving one-on-one attention to every student, they can't always do that. Or can they? McGovern Middle School teacher Artis Iverson found a way to add meaning to the lives of those important to her by connecting them for the benefit of each other. So we're going to play a video now, and I hope you like what you see.
So I'm reading this book. It's weird sports records.
Oh, yes. Well, read to me a little bit, would you?
She is messy. She is happy also. Or two. The end.
Well done.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
I'm Artis Iverson, and I teach reading intervention class, System 44 and Read 180 at George McGovern Middle School.
Hop on and...
Elevator.
An elevator ride to the top.
So this is a reading intervention class. Now, it has students who are struggling in the reading area, and they need help with fluency, with decoding skills, with comprehension skills. And so one of the ways to practice fluency is I had a Google Meet with my mom. She's 95 years old, and she lives in Minnesota. She's quarantining with my sister that she's living with. And she is listening to them. And they actually do a much better job reading for her than they do when I'm listening to them read one-on-one. It started when I went up to the cities to celebrate my mom's 95th birthday, and I brought a Chromebook that our principal allowed me to borrow. And she then started meeting with us that following Monday. And she was nervous, the kids were nervous, but it was incredible how just so quickly they warmed up to her. And she got very comfortable with it as well.
Hi, I'm reading the book called Medical Miracle.
Okay. I want to listen.
The one thing that I saw in the students is when they were reading to me, I don't know if they were more nervous or just more particular, but they felt far more comfortable reading to my mom. And their confidence just bloomed. And when she'd start asking them questions, then, you know, they were, you know, ready to answer questions, and they'd start asking her questions. And so it became quite an interaction in that confidence beast.
That's a good job. Well done.
Have a nice day.
Thank you. You too.
She was in assisted living residence, and as soon as COVID hit Minnesota, my sisters took her out to live with my one sister. And fortunately, they all have jobs that they can work from home. And during the summer, she could be outside, and she could garden and, you know, enjoy the fresh air, but once the cold weather hit, they didn't know what, you know, she was going to be able to do. And I thought that maybe with Google Meet, and I learned how to use Google Meet during remote learning, and I thought, why not try this? And this will give her an opportunity to get inside my classroom, which she's always wanted to do. And she loves listening to kids and working with kids, and she just gets a fulfillment out of, you know, helping students with something such as as simple as fluency.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, honey, for reading. You did a good job.
She always wanted to be a teacher. I feel like in my beginning years, I learned more from her in the academic arena than I learned at school, just because she was constantly working with us, with our reading, with our homework, and constantly encouraging us in that way. So yeah, she definitely played the part of a teacher at home. I definitely want to continue this. And I know that at first, we were doing all four hours throughout the entire day that I was working with students. That got a little long for her. And so now we've got, she does the first two hours with me Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then she does the last two hours on Mondays and Wednesdays. So we definitely want to continue this because... So we definitely want to continue this because it's enjoyable for her, it's enjoyable for the kids, and it actually helps me out because the kids get much more time to practice their fluency, which obviously I don't get as much time one-on-one with the kids as I'd like.
I would either do the painting one, or either the motorcycle one, or the cleaning Because I mean, that's, they're all doing a good job.
And so are you.
I said we had 1,850 teachers. We may have another one to put on the payroll. But we heard about this. Our special education, one of our administrators was in the classroom just doing a visit and came across this. And it's just one example of many wonderful things that are happening in creative ways that, you know, teachers are using to help their students. And I would guess, you know, the, the benefit is mutual there for both the students who are practicing their fluency and for the 95-year-old mother who likely looks forward to those two hours where she can listen to students and be part of that. So I thought that was a pretty great way to, to spend some, some quality time. So that leads us right into our next part of the good news report this evening, along with excellent teachers, of course. We're very lucky in the Sioux Falls School District to have partner organizations that come alongside us on the educational journey. One such organization is making a huge impact on dozens of classrooms and thousands of students in the Sioux Falls School District. The Promising Futures Fund was founded in 2019 and supported by volunteer board members who focus on the needs of students in schools with a high percentage of free and reduced lunch. And Steve Hildebrand is chair of that group. He has a couple of other members with him this evening. He'll come up and, and say a few words. The impacts from this group are, are long. But before turning over the mic, I want to just mention a couple of key areas of support, particularly the expansion of the district's literacy program. So again, very much in support of, you know, the literacy that's going on in our classrooms. They're supporting schools with Book of the Month, or each student take home a book to improve their literacy while they're away from the classroom. Pre-COVID, this group was funding some field trips for us, playground equipment, flexible seating, coats. They arranged with other partner organizations to provide books, birthday bags for students. In one case, they, a principal told us, they purchased eyeglasses for a student who needed them as well. One of our schools reported that Promising Futures organized a panel of people from past poverty and ethnic backgrounds to talk to the students about hope and how you can follow your dreams. If you work hard, you can get there, you can be successful. They've also taken care of our staff in many different ways at these particular schools by providing meals, other supplies to enhance the classroom experience for, for students. And so in this season of Thanksgiving, we're grateful to Promising Futures for all they've done. And I would welcome Steve to come forward and accept just a small certificate of appreciation awarded to Promising Futures Fund for outstanding support of Sioux Falls School District students and staff, and signed by Superintendent Dr. Jane Stavum. So thank you so much for this. I have some photos. While Steve is talking, I'll show a couple of photos of work that they've done in the classroom.
Well, thank you very much for having us, for the recognition. Cynthia is one of our board members, a few others that are here, Jan Nicolai, former principal at Washington High, Eric Schulte, Naomi Blain. We have about 14 board members, and it's all volunteers. We've raised about $1.7 million in the, in our first year, which we're very proud of. And we've really been supported by this community, and it's, it's really quite gratifying. Poverty is a real issue in Sioux Falls, and I think most people are becoming even more aware of that. And that was a big goal of ours at the beginning, was to get this community to understand that there's haves and there's have-nots. And there's schools that have upwards of 100% rates of poverty. And there's a whole bunch of schools that are on the opposite end of the spectrum, but not everybody's treated the same way. The schools that we focus on are largely the Title I schools. We focus on 12 elementary schools and, and two middle schools at this time. We'll probably add more schools as we go on. But we're really at the mercy of the principals. Tell us what you need. Let us be your parent-teacher association. We want to, we want to do, within reason, anything you want us to do to come in and fund book programs. We want to feed your staff and let them know that the community appreciates the hard work that they do. You know, we have learned so much over our first year of what these schools need. We've got a lot more to learn, and we have a lot more work to do. We want to change lives, and that's a big mission. But we want every kid in these title schools to have the same opportunities as a kid going in another school with, with a higher level of income. That's, that's our mission, that's our goal. I would say 70% of what we do is focused on reading. We want every kid to have every capacity to read as possible. That will be a much greater predictor of success than just about anything else. If you can read, you can succeed. And we love what we're doing. We've appreciated the partnership with the school district and with our principals and teachers in the schools. And we get, we hear from them how hard they're working, how challenged they are right now. And, you know, to their defense, if our schools were the model in this state, if the Sioux Falls schools were the model in this state, our state would not have the kind of caseload that we have right now. It's not the Sioux Falls schools' fault for the high COVID rates, it's the rest of the community and the rest of the state. Our teachers, our healthcare workers need greater support from this community to do a better job and keep our kids and our teachers and our staff safe. So thank you for all that the district does, and the teachers do, and the board does, and everybody else. We love working with you. We love what we're doing, and we got a lot more work to do.
Thank you, Steve, and to the other board members. Naomi's actually a teacher in our district. She's at Annie Sullivan this year. She was at the Immersion Center last year at Jane Adams. And Jan Nicolai, as Steve pointed out, is a longtime educator in the Sioux Falls School District principal, et cetera. So thank you. Her knowledge is helpful as well. And Eric Schulte, our attorney, so he keeps us safe, I guess, on that. And the partnership started under Dr. Maher, and it's continued with Dr. Stavum. And it, it's such a nice compliment to our school, to our school system, because as we know, these schools don't have the PTAs or PTOs that the other schools do have, so that we can provide those supports to those schools in our community. And as the other thing we all know, is Sioux Falls is such a generous community that they've really stepped up in the credibility, how the donations go to the schools directly, and there's no administrative fees, has really helped this program be successful. So thank you, Steve, for the idea behind this and, and doing all the work behind us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Onto the approval of the consent agenda, items 8A through H. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Board Member Parker.
Aye.
Board Member Ryder.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey. And Board Member Nicholson, aye. That is approved. Onto the supplemental consent agenda.
Just real quick. We skipped over conflicts, I'm assuming there are.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. There were no new conflicts, so thank you for pointing that out to me. Yes, there were no new conflicts of interest presented. And Board Member Nicholson, aye. Now to the supplemental consent agenda. Items 9A, 1 through 4, Claim to Sanford Health. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Board Member Parker.
Aye.
Board Member Ryder.
Abstain.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey. Board Member Nicholson abstain. We have, that passed with three ayes and two abstentions. Onto 9B, Claims to Avera Healthcare, Items 1 and 2. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Board Member Parker.
Abstain.
Board Member Ryder.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey. Board Member Nicholson, aye. That passes four to one with four and one abstention. Onto the reports of the superintendent. Item A, Physical Education Evaluation Report.
Good evening. Tonight, I bring to you the Physical Education Implementation Report. Every year after we have an implementation, we bring to you the results of that implementation. So the purpose of the report is to provide that update. It follows along with District Priority 1, Student Outcomes, and the annual objective of evaluating that curriculum implementation. The board approved the K-12 Physical Education Adoption on February 25, 2019, and the curriculum was implemented the fall of 2019, following the South Dakota standards for K-12 Physical Education and best practices. During the fall of 2019, the Physical Education Professional Development focused on activities and skills aligned with the South Dakota Physical Education Curriculum to utilize motor skills, movement concepts, and principles while participating and being physically active. The professional development teams at each level shared the new curriculum and the technology tools. During the training, staff worked in small groups to discuss new concepts, ask questions, and the staff appreciated that small group hands-on format to explore and familiarize themselves with the new curriculum and the technology. One of the biggest challenges of that new tech, that new curriculum was the technology. And so to help support them with that new implementation of the video projectors, televisions, Apple TV, iPads, and then the I, the heart monitors, so the wrist monitors that all the middle school students have access to while they're in that physical education class, really helps them to understand their personal fitness level and to support them with that. The staff with the technology implementation had additional training, and we continued that training throughout last year, so they feel comfortable with all that, all the components. So after we complete that first year, we, we send out a survey to those physical education teachers, and here's the feedback on the curriculum and the resources. They, they like the technology that was provided for the students and staff, and it helps the students to realize their activity levels. We also have a Google Shared Drive that, for the teachers across the district, that allows them to collaborate with lessons and share those resources, and so they're accessible to students or to staff at any time. What were some of the positive changes was the small group games, and they feel like the students are, it increased their activity level. The heart rate monitors, which help keep them motivated and keep them out of their comfort zone, you know, get them into that red zone, and so that way they know what that extra level, that they have to push themselves. And the technology for all students, which helps them set their goals. And we know that student goal setting is a number one indicator of success. So when they have some saying that, they can regulate that. And also, it's that competition of seeing how they're doing. Along with the general education, we also have students with disabilities, and we provide equal access opportunities for these students in that physical education class to meet their needs. And all students receive instruction based on the state physical education standards with accommodations and for some modifications if it's noted in their IEP. We want to make sure that we have all-inclusive and accessible practices for students with disabilities that require PE teachers to consider those accommodations and modifications for equipment, rules for instruction, and environments. And in addition to that, the implementation of fundamentals of fitness and movement into the classroom that provides physical education for students that we serve within the RISE program, who require smaller staff-to-student ratio and more supported setting to modify that curriculum and receive educational benefit. And so we surveyed the staff on the fundamentals of fitness and motivation and movement, and some of the comments that they had was they needed some more support, additional training in instructional strategies and adaptations, working with a pair of professionals, and IEP development and data collection. And so throughout last year and into the fall, more support and training was provided for staff as needed. And that's the positive of going through the curriculum for one year, looking at the needs and the adjustments that need to be made, listening to staff, and providing support as needed to ensure that they have what they need. So the feedback was collected through surveys, directly director-called meetings, curriculum meetings, which include all staff, and informal classroom observations. So in summary, the Physical Education Implementation incorporates fitness, motor skill development, age-appropriate skills to promote an active and healthy lifestyle for a lifetime of physical activity. The education staff will continue to add new resources, activities, and provide professional development as needed to ensure students engage in lessons and fitness activities to guide them in training. I stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Boyson? Thank you for that report. We know mental and physical health are so important, especially now with all we're going through. So it's great that we're having good results with the new program, and I'm glad that it's being implemented. And I know they've probably had to adapt a lot of things this year so that things aren't being shared and, and so forth, based on the return to learn and so forth. So had to pivot again.
Yeah, that's right. And we have good leadership in that, that, and the coaches and the PE teachers all have adapted to make sure that they are doing what they need to keep everybody where they need to be and active. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the K-12 Physical Education Implementation Report?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Board Member Parker.
Aye.
Board Member Ryder.
Aye.
Board Member Baker.
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey. And Board Member Nicholson, aye. It is acknowledged. Onto the update for the winter activities, winter athletics and activities, please.
We're going to have two parts, actually, to this. Doug Morrison is going to present just an update, and then we will cover the athletics and activities. There's just a couple of things I'll say as Doug is pulling up his slides. This has been a difficult year, and it's not just our school district, it's every school district in, in America, and really in the world. And we've put in place many, many things in our classrooms that have made teaching and learning clunky and difficult and cumbersome. If you've ever watched a first-grade teacher trying to teach reading with a mask on and distinguish between sounds, or a young reader beginning to try to discern those sounds and learn to read, it's really difficult. It's just as difficult when there is a substitute teacher and they're not as familiar with the subject matter, and hundreds of other things that make this year difficult. What we have done is built our model to be very, very clear about our schedule and continuing to provide in-person learning for our students. And so Doug will give an update. We gave an update to the board in September, and we'll talk about that, and we'll all have a few remarks after his presentation. But we have a long school year left to go. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. We have those plans in place for a reason. We may have to move to other parts of our model along the way. And our goal has been to have that wholesale changeover like we saw last spring be really a last resort. We're trying to model now more by classroom, grade level, school, and do things because every situation is different. Every classroom looks different, every scenario that we deal with is different. And we're trying to do our very best to look at those in those individual circumstances. We know that's difficult because we don't say there's a magic number, or a threshold, or a time that will indicate that we flip a switch to something. Even in communities that have a color-coded system or a leveled system, that, that community response doesn't necessarily equate with a school district response. There, there are many instances where things may be going down as a community in terms of viral activity, and a school district may still be remote. Another case may be the community spread is on an upturn. Another case may be the community spread is on an upturn significantly, but school is still happening in person. We have to do things here in Sioux Falls according to what that looks like in individual classrooms and schools, and that's been our goal to this point. So Doug's going to give you an update on that right now, and then we're gonna hear from Casey Miley about what sports look like because that's been a, a part of what first part of our school year looks like. Now it's going to be a completely different scenario as we have things moved indoors and we have different sports. We don't know what that will look like, and everybody is now having new decisions to make and new things to consider. That's going to continue to happen all through the year because our school district has lots of things that are seasonal and that change over time, and we're gonna continue to adapt as we go. So Doug, I'm gonna turn it over to you with that.
All right, thank you, Dr. Staveen. Good evening, board. Hard to believe we're three months into the school year this week, so thought it would be a good time, especially with break coming up, to give you a, an update on the Return to Learn Plan and maybe give you a few metrics and just let you know how the process is going. So first thing I want to start with is you're all familiar with the levels. So we've been operating under two levels of, of green, if you will, Level One and a Level Two, and then we have a yellow modified, and then an orange, which would be remote learning. And we publish those out on the, the district website. And so we basically, on a daily basis, show what every one of those levels are. And to date, we have had, currently, we have two instances across the district where we have two schools at Level Two, which means that they have a classroom within the school that is operating remotely. Since, over the three months since school started, we have eight, had eight schools that have had instances like that. And all, all of those, but two have returned to normal learning. So we continue to, we have had no instances where we've had to go to a, a Level Yellow of a complete modified schedule, or certainly no instances of complete remote learning and orange status. So we feel pretty good about the first three months and how, but we also have been diligent in making sure that if a classroom needs to go remote for whatever reason, based on all the facts, after we gather them, that we've made that decision to, to try to keep the, the kids and, and our staff healthy. So over the course of the summer, we developed a, a pretty sophisticated tracking system to be able to track the number of either students or staff that would be in quarantine, either because of a positive case or close contact or symptomatic. And so we take that information in on a daily basis, and we look at those statistics across our buildings. We have about thirty-seven programs, sites that we look at. So it's not only the schools, it's IPC, it's Central Services, other sites that we have out there. And we look at those profiles on a daily basis about what it's telling us as far as positive cases at a staff level, a student level, and also at a quarantine level. And so today, as of today, we have about point-five percent or half a percent of our students that are out with a, identified as a positive case, so they're not in school today. And we have about point-eight percent of our staff, a little less than one percent of our staff, that are out with positive, identified as positive cases. And so those have been pretty typical of what we've seen over the first three months of the school year. And then we also have students that are out on, on quarantine. Now, they can be quarantined for, because they're symptomatic. They can be quarantined because they were identified through the DOH on a community-wide, community basis as being quarantined, or they can come through our close-contact process that we have in the district. So they could be out under any of those scenarios, and we currently have about nine percent of our students that are out on some type of quarantine. Some of those may be out on the, on quarantine for the whole time. Some may be able to come back because if they were symptomatic and they come back with a negative test or a doctor's note or whatever, they may be able to come back before that. Our tracking system tracks beginning and end dates of quarantine, so our buildings always know when a stu, if a student should be there or they shouldn't be there. And so there's a great amount of coordination across all areas of the district. Really, you look at our, our Health Services staff working out at the building levels. Here at IPC, DOH is involved. We obviously need help from the parents and our health partners. So it's really a, a partnership to understand where we're at on any given day. Really, we're looking at where we're at multiple times throughout the day. So many of us have it pulled up on a daily basis, and that's what we do. We look at what's coming in, what's rolling off, and we try to look at it at the building level, at the grade level, at every level that we can. And then, and then, of course, we make those decisions on, on learning levels and things of that nature. So we feel pretty good about our process, that we always know where we're at, at any, at any given time. We're also able to triangulate against different metrics out there. You know, we know the state won't publish individual school results or district results, but they do publish a, at least a broad K through twelve numbers, what they're seeing for cases. We know we're eighteen percent of that number theoretically, so we can look at whether we're below or above that number just to say, you know, are we seeing a significantly more spread than they might be across the rest of the state? We're able to occasionally triangulate against districts in, you know, maybe a Harrisburg or Brandon or something like that, just to see if we're seeing similar things. So we also feel pretty good from an overall perspective on where we, where we have been. You know, mitigation factors, you know, when, early on, when, when you approved the Return to Learn Plan, we know masks would be a significant portion, part of the mitigation plan. And so the expectation in the district is that kids will wear a mask, and we continue to stress that, both for in-school learning as well as activities out of school, and really something that we will be diligent on as a district to try to educate students that they need to wear their masks, right? Because it comes into quarantining and what kids are allowed to come back from quarantine or, or, and so this is a significant item is to, is to wear their masks. Additionally, you know, through the process, again, that started in the summer when we met and put the Return to Learn Plan, we've, we have spent just shy of ten million dollars in what I call to, to provide the safest learning environment possible. And you can see some of those different areas. It could be facilities where we've made air filtration enhancements, safer drinking fountains, all those types of things, significant expenditure on those things. Trying to make food service safer, right? So using things like disposable trays and, and trying to make things as hands-off as possible so that we know that food, food service is, is working as, as well as it can. Instruction, obviously, significant expenditures there through additional sub-pay platforms to support remote learning, things of that nature. We've made investments there. Health in general, we provided money for additional nurses to be out there in the schools. Contact tracers, again, back to our, our database and tracking, we spend a significant amount of resources on contact tracing. So if someone is identified as a positive case, there's a whole contact tracing procedure that goes into that so we can keep the broader school population as, as safe as possible. Remote learning, you all know that we have tried and, and done a good job at equipping our school to go to remote learning if we have to. And so we've made significant investment in things like laptops and iPads, as well as the virtual academy that's out there that has, you know, roughly ten percent of our students learning virtually on an everyday basis. We had to make that technology and platforms possible to make that happen. And so significant investment there. And then just all the things that we've done around sanitization and social distancing across the district, whether that's hand sanitizer, masks, face shields, all those types of things that we've tried to make this the safest learning environment that we can for our, our students and staff across the district. And then also, we, we've realized that there's just so many circumstances out there where a staff member could be impacted by this. It might not be directly with a quarantine situation that happens in a school, but it could be something outside of school. We know that staff could just be in a position where they're gonna have to miss, have to miss school or be out of, out of school. And so we, we've provided some additional leave options there in the, in the district to our, our teachers and staff, something we call the Sioux Falls District COVID-19 Leave, which essentially provides for teachers up to eight additional leave days to, for reasons that have to do with COVID-related things. And so we feel pretty good that the, the Return to Learn Plan that we spent all summer on, basically, and, and we've modified it every day as we've gone forward in a, not in a written sense, but we adapt to the situation that we find every day as, as a team, working, again, all those partners that I mentioned before, looking at different scenarios, so we feel good about where we're at. So with that, I would ask you to acknowledge the Return to Learn Update Report and stand by for questions, or we can let Casey go first.
Let's, let's handle this, I think, because there'll be two separate type of questions and answers, so maybe we'll go with you, and then you can be done, and then Casey can come on up. First of all, thank you for this information. I think this is helpful to our families and the public to provide this. It would, for me, it was twofold why I wanted to see this at this point. It's, you know, been over a month now since we changed our Return to Learn mask-to-mask policy for quarantine, so I wanted to see if that had significantly changed, altered our numbers as far as positive cases in our building, and it didn't. And so that's, that's significant. And then, second, it's a good lead in, into going to our Thanksgiving break to remind families and students that we're doing really well right now, but we need to keep going. And with going into Thanksgiving break, we have to be smart about what activities we do and don't do, and who we are around and what we're not doing. So that is why it's important to, we're doing well now, so let's keep it going, and hopefully, after Thanksgiving break, be able to continue our in-person learning. So thank you for that information. The, I know it's hard for our staff and so forth with this. You know, we're all trying to do two things at once, whether it's remote learning or in-person and all that. But I just read a study from the New York Times on schools that are full-on virtually learning, and it's really hard on them, too, because, say, you're a high school teacher and you have six classes of thirty students, and they're all virtually doing. This isn't like the virtual learning we did in the spring. This is real school now. And so they're having, you know, a hundred and eighty kids calling or parents and emailing all, all through the day. We're right now at nine percent of our students are only virtual. So imagine that magnitude of coming down if we had it for our staff to do that at that time, too. So I, I do sympathize with you all. I, I know it's hard. We have two board members who are in healthcare, and what they're facing right now is also hard. But, and, and, and we are here for you, and we're not against you. But we're trying to do what our mission is, is to educate our children in the safest environment we can, considering the circumstances we have at this time. Thank you.
President Nicholson, I would just like to add, I think, I was asked a great question today is, what's, what's one of the most surprising things about all of this from the beginning and what we expected until now? I think one of the most difficult things is what you were kind of just alluding to is contact tracing and the amount of work that that's taken for staff and for people in our schools to kind of track down so that we can have people stay home who are ill or may potentially be ill. And then what that does, even when we thought we might have corrected something that would have led to less people being on quarantine, some are still choosing to do that or still, still need to be. And that's created a significant burden on many of our staff members. And it's, it's, I think, probably been one of the more surprising things about the load that has come from that. And so that's something that we hope might change over time as we see a vaccine in the future, as we look at community numbers that are starting to come down. We are concerned about another leave where people may be out, you know, not using good safety protocols, so I'm glad you mentioned that. But I think that's one of the more interesting things. It's been nights, weekends, late nights of phone calls, contact tracers working with us. I will say, I think that's been a big burden statewide, and the folks in our district have provided very, very timely notification. When there's a positive test, people are notified. When you're a close contact, you're notified. And often, the quarantine period is over before that notification comes officially from the Department of Health. That's through no fault, except for having a lot of activity going on around the state. But because of our diligence, we've been able to do things very, very quickly. And so we appreciate the work of our staff to mitigate those things as quickly as possible.
Any other comments or questions for Doug? Can you take that up?
Well, the feedback seems to suggest that most stakeholders want to see a continuations of, of schools adapting at a granular level, adapting at a granular level with the goal of keeping students and staff mentally and physically healthy so that we encourage each student to continue to make adaptations that work best for them. With that, continuing to wear the mask, washing hands, social distancing, plexiglass, it just, the majority of stakeholders really are, are complementary towards the adaptations we've been taking at granular level to keep the kids in school. So the extra efforts, it seems, from stakeholder feedback are paying dividends.
Thank you.
I think, I, I'd just like to add something, and I'm trying to get myself off mute quick. I just, I, I, you know, going back to even our Good News Report and, and even our PE report tonight, you know, talking about our students that are in reading recovery type of classes or special ed classes. And I think it's so important for us to try to maintain that in-person learning because we know that there are so many students within our district that need the learning, the safety, the security within our, that we provide within our district meals. And while, of course, we're all concerned about COVID and the impact on our community, I do feel like our school district has done a good job in mitigating the, the effects that we're feeling throughout the community. Again, just mask-wearing is so important, and we know that. So I just, I'm always got my kind of hat on thinking about those students that need us every day, and trying to maintain our in-person learning is so important.
Thank you, Kate, so true. I, I was, a couple of parents from Rapid City had reached out to me recently. As you all know, they've gone remote learning, and they, they, I can't remember the statistic, but it was like a two-hundred percent jump in suicides in their community since they've gone hybrid and remote. And they're very, very concerned of, of the mental effects of what happens when the, the entire school supports that are not able to be there for not in-person learning. So that goes exactly to what Board Member Parker was saying. So I get what you're saying. We'll have public input, and then we'll acknowledge your report. Okay, Fernando?
Are you ready to?
Would you introduce yourself and give your address? And then Carly will start the five minutes for you. Thank you.
So Fernando Bulas is my name. Address is 2500 South Mostone Avenue. So I'm here representing myself. I'm a pediatric infectious diseases specialist. I work at Sand for Children's, and I was here in this room giving collaboration while back to the Return to, to Learn. And I'm glad to hear all of those, like, results and, and what, what is happening. Wanted to bring a few comments, and thank you for all the comments, and thank you for letting me speak here. So we all know I'm an expert, but I'll have to tell you the local situation is, is bad, like, overall. Schools are doing good, as you have, like, like pointed out. And Michael, thank you for coming and being, like, very brave and courage, and have the courage to come and, and speak. And I also want to say and also, like, reiterate what Steve said, that, I mean, our schools are doing good. The rates of transmission directly to schools, the national average is- The rates of transmission directly to schools, the national average is significantly low. And like all the medical societies, American Academy of Pediatrics, infectious diseases societies, public health societies, what we want to is like to keep schools open because we know of the benefit for the kids and the families to keep the kids at, at, at school. We don't want to, to close them. We want to keep like this situation, you know, under control. As Steve mentioned, there are other things outside of school that is what is creating this, like, situation to be not the best, not the ideal that, that we have. As you mentioned, the, the city of New York is just recently, they are being very transparent about the challenges that they had with the virtual classes that they are having. And in a way, they're regretting of like closing the schools during this time and keeping restaurants and bars open, to give, to give an example. We know that in the beginning of, of the year, beginning of the pandemic, I mean, it was not only that we closed schools, we closed bars, restaurants, gyms, we closed churches. And so now that we have the schools going live and being able to look at everything as a whole picture, all the studies, not only like in the US, but the epidemiological data from other parts of the world are showing once again that the schools are not the spreaders, like, for the community. Yes, there are cases. Yes, I mean, of course, the teachers are part of the community, kids are part of the community, and there are infections. But as it was like pointed out, those rates, I mean, support keeping our schools open. Thanksgiving is coming, as you mentioned, and I wanted to encourage and to bring, and to support and reiterate the recommendations from, from the CDC. One of the important things in, in public health, right? I'm sorry.
Did the mic go then?
Yeah.
Is, can you hear me?
Portable one we could bring him. Or take me. It's mic issues today.
Can you hear? No.
Here.
Check your mics. Mine are, mine's good.
Test, test. They're all dead.
They're all dead. Okay. We can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you.
Talk really loud.
Hello?
Oh, now they're working.
Now they're back? Okay. Now I have to. So we're talking about like Thanksgiving coming and how we are like, all, all the public health experts are concerned about the holidays and especially Thanksgiving coming up. And like knowing the, the recommendations, I mean, the safest recommendation that we can give is just to keep your celebration to your own household. But we understand we are all fatigued. We probably want to see like some relatives and, but then it's come to knowing the risks of, of, of those gatherings. Because one of the things that we know very important about this virus is that people who do not present with any symptoms are 40% of the times the spreaders of, of this virus. So it is innocently, it is, you know, unintentionally that, yes, we want to see our relatives, we want to see our friends and thinking that we don't have the symptoms, then we ended up spreading the virus. So CDC has put like very nice guidelines that I would like recommend to be spread among the whole school community, teachers, staff, students, parents, into having a safer Thanksgiving with creative ideas such as having virtual Thanksgiving. And one of the mottos is that, I mean, we probably want to celebrate a good Thanksgiving, an adequate Thanksgiving next year with the holidays, with everyone being together. And as you mentioned, the, the vaccine, we are cautiously optimistic, but now more optimistic into being able to have a vaccine for, for next year. So what it is going to be, something transitory, just like transient for this year, to have a safer Thanksgiving for the next one.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time. Anything else to add to that report?
I would just add, as a healthcare worker, many of my coworkers have students who go to school. And so as we look at keeping our schools open, it is important for us to do so so that our kids have places to go, so that we can continue to take care of the people who need the help who are in the hospital. And so our, our school district is functioning really on many different levels of supporting people during this pandemic. And so when I look at these numbers, you know, do we wish they were zero? We sure do. But the numbers that we're at right now, I feel very good about. And I think a lot of that has to do with the effort that our janitors and our lunch people and our teachers and our principals and everybody in our buildings is putting forth in order to make our schools as safe as they possibly can be. And so I think we just need to continue those efforts. And I know it's hard. I work in that same environment, only I'm working with sick people and it's hard and it's emotionally draining. So I understand that. It's, can be scary at times, depending on who you're working with, and you, there's a lot of unknowns. But I think if we can all work together, we can get through this and we can have positive outcomes for our community. I really do think that if we end up having to go to hybrid or having to go remote, it's not going to be the result of anybody's failure in the school district. It really is going to be unfortunately the failure of our community to actually step up and do what's right for our community and, and do what's right to keep our restaurants open and our schools open and all of our businesses going. And that's just as simple as wearing a mask, ordering takeout, social distancing, all of those things, good hand hygiene. And, and like Dr. Bula said, I know it stinks to have to stay home on Thanksgiving, but it's a, it's one sacrifice that you can make that's really going to make a big difference long-term. And they're talking about at the hospital that we can see a spike of 200 more patients two weeks after Thanksgiving. And when we're struggling to care for the people that we have in our doors right now and our beds right now, you add 200 more to that and it's not going to be pretty. And that's going to start impacting the people who don't have COVID, whether it's a heart attack or whether it's a stroke or whether it's a skiing injury because you go out to Great Bear or whatever it is, you may not have a bed because of people's decisions that are going to be made this week. So please do think about that as we continue. And then again, we could have this conversation when it comes to our winter break because it's going to be the same thing and we all want this to go away. But the only way it's going to go away is if we all put forth that effort to make that happen. So thank you for your thoughts, Dr. Bula, and thank you for the information. Doug and we'll keep plugging away as a district to try to do the best that we can.
It is, it is exhausting and I do commend our staff. And please know we are here for you and want to listen to you. And you will not, retribution will not occur. That's why we're here. We, we run for the big money. I'm kidding. But we know that that's part of the, the, our job, complaining. So it, it comes with the job. So please know we're always here to listen and that we are so close to the finish line here with COVID, with the vaccines that we know are finding success. And we know it won't be for everybody right away, but as the time goes. So if we can just do all the safe practices now to keep going, we'll, we'll see good results in, in our school district. So thank you. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the update on the Return to Learn?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Board Member Parker?
Aye.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
Board Member Baker?
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey? And Board Member Mickelson?
Aye.
We'll move on to the second part of that, which is the Winter Athletics and Activities. Boyd and Casey are?
And I'm just going to preface their comments tonight to the board to say how important their work has been this year for our students in athletics and activities. And I remember one of my first days out at Howard Wood Field, I saw Mr. Miley in one of our AEDs on the far side in 90-some degree heat, taking our tape and marking off every other row. And those tapes stayed in place, I think, most of the season, which is also probably a little bit amazing. But I knew at that point with the work they were putting forth and then going into band rooms and choir rooms and seeing how they outfitted instruments with things on them to keep spread from happening and space kids apart, walking by when kids are doing instrument lessons. And instead of a group of them, there's maybe one or two, or there's four, but they're all spaced out. And, you know, those are the things that make you feel good and hurt your heart all at the same time because they're happening, which is great, but they're happening in these ways that are so abnormal in some ways. So we appreciate the work of all of our folks associated with activities because it has really been some amazing efforts to help kids still have a season and to have an activity. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Perkins.
Good evening. I'm Boyd Perkins. I'm the coordinator of Fine Arts. And I'm up here with Casey Miley, who is the Director of Athletics here in the school district. And we'd just like to point out that the Sioux Falls School District Activities Department's top priority is and will be the health and safety of our student participants, our staff and our spectators, as we work to provide activities for the 2020-2021 school year. District administrators have worked with the city, state, and national officials to develop safety guidelines and protocols for each activity. These guidelines and protocols will provide the opportunity for safety at our activities and ultimately support our primary goal of continuing a traditional school setting in the Sioux Falls School District. We are recommending that we continue in our current mode of operation for activities. There are some modifications we'll, we'll go through here in just a moment. But in the area of fine arts, we're in what we call an activities of Tier Three. That is for our practice events and specified performance attendance. Social distancing, as enacted in the classroom, is still in use in the performance. We don't change for the performance. We keep our spacing. We wear the masks. We do everything that we do right in the classroom with all those mitigations right in place. In terms of high school and middle school and concert or show attendance, events will be made available in digital format when possible. So far, we've made every event available in that format. All audiences will be highly encouraged to watch the live stream for these events when offered. Some concerts may be performed in a remote format only. For the concerts that are having attendance, due to large numbers of audience members and participants at venues, capacity will be limited based on social distancing guidelines in the facility. Limited tickets will be issued in advance based on capacity as equitably as possible. This in order to keep people spaced at six feet apart for, in the audience. As far as student attendance goes, students are welcome to attend. Those are non-participant students, welcome to attend if enough tickets remain following the family distribution.
Good evening. On the athletic side of things, our recommendation is the Tier Three as well to, to correlate with the Fine Arts recommendation. And we have now all indoor activities in Sioux Falls School District as we're moving to our winter athletics. We successfully concluded our fall season this past weekend. Roosevelt and Washington finished third and fourth in the state volleyball tournament. So it was a successful fall season for all of us and we're excited that we were able to complete that. But a lot of it was due to the measures that we had in place by our coaches and, and our student athletes in the Sioux Falls School District. With going indoors and our activities in, in our winter sports being highly, our students attend our events very well in the winter activities for our girls' and boys' basketball events. And then the nature of wrestling and gymnastics and the sheer amount of equipment that we have in our facilities, we are limited to one side of the bleachers. So our recommendation would be to go from a four per rostered participant to a two per rostered participant, just because of those and the capacity that we can hold in, in our gymnasiums this coming winter. Other than that, nothing else would change. So that would just be the adult attendance, the student, student attendance would mirror how we operated this fall. And that would be any and all students that have an activity pass can, are welcome to attend. Our staff members would still be able to attend. And remember, our staff ID badge is, is just for them solely. It's not a plus-one guest pass. If any elementary or middle school age students would like to attend, they need to be a part of the two per rostered athlete in this Sioux Falls School District. We both do that for both our home and away spectators. So it would be similar for both communities that are participating in the event. And in wrestling, sometimes we're going to go to a pod system. Wrestling and gymnastics is going to look a lot like Cheer and Dance did in the fall. It's going to be a pod system where we bring four teams in, compete those four teams. All four of those teams leave and then the next four teams come in. So that's what the, the athletics is going to kind of look like this, this winter. And that would be our recommendation on the, the participation part of it.
Mr. Miley, can you just remind people where the tier system comes from and why athletics and activities are aligned with that?
Yeah, so if, if you remember me visiting with you about this, this fall, when we, when we first went into this and we were hosting state basketball in the Dakota Relays in the spring, the CDC recommendations were coming out as we were going. And they started at 200 per mass event gathering. And then they went to 150 and then they went to 100 and then they went to 50. So that's why we developed the tiered system in the Sioux Falls School District. And it also correlates with the, the guidance that we've received from the National Federation of High Schools and the South Dakota High School Activities Association Task Force gave those recommendations of the tiered system. And that's what we adopted in our first recommendation to, to the school board this fall is that tiered system. And one is the, the events are closed and we're not operating. Two would be no, no fans in, at our events, but still operating and holding those events. Tier Three is what we're currently in with limited attendance. And then Four would be green and attendance as normal. And I think that's really paid off for us because we're just doing every opportunity that we can to provide these activities for our students and being involved in our, in our activities in the Sioux Falls School District. And that's not only gymnastics, wrestling and participation of those, but also allowing our students to come in and attend and be a part of the community and get together and talk and have those fun times. And our high school memories are created in those. So it's not only for the participants that are on the floor, but also creating those opportunities for students to attend and support each other and be a, a good community member within our schools.
You know, the wonderful thing that's happening is I'm seeing more live streaming activities and games, so that it's more ability for grandparents or extended family who aren't able to participate or be there in person even before COVID because of travel or jobs or whatever, have that opportunity to watch or observe their student and do this. I've also seen the neat thing, my son used to do debate and I know the Welter's son is the coach, debate coach at Lincoln, is that now these teams are competing via online and not having the travel and overnight expenses and they're able to, you know, compete in tournaments all over. I think Roosevelt's had some all over the country this year because it's one of their debate teams. So those, that's a neat thing that we're able to adapt to those things and provide that opportunity for more people to participate or observe in these activities and sports.
Cynthia, I would just like to add that these two plans and the guidelines are playing a significant role in mental health care for the students, the coaches, the fans, the families. Your efforts have most definitely gone recognized on a variety of different levels. So the extra effort is paying off.
And I'll just echo or jump onto Cynthia's comments. I have a middle schooler that's in orchestra and we were able to, at night that we were available, watch his performance and share the link with, with grandparents that don't live in town and wouldn't normally be able to see him anyway. So it was just a really great opportunity there for us to be able to share that experience with family that are, are not close by. So I think there are some definite benefits to, to that.
I would just like to add, I think that the timing of having the new activities website couldn't have been more perfect. And so I would just encourage you guys to work with your coaches to give your, give the families that new information because having just finished volleyball season, the number of parents who had no idea how to find the live stream, and it's so easy. And so if we could really try to hype that up, I think there will be And so if we could really try to hype that up, I think there will be people who are disappointed that there's only two spectators per student. But I thought that the live streams were fantastic this year. There were times that we didn't go and we just watched. And it's a great opportunity for students to kind of work on their calling the games and things like that. You get some humorous comments as part of that, too. But they do, it's a great video. It's a, you have a great advantage of being able to see the whole court and sit safely on your couch and have your popcorn or whatever you want. But I think we can do more to try to get that website out there. Because when I have shown it to people, they're like, I had no idea. When did this start? And so the more that we can advertise that, I think we can help people to understand, yes, you can't do this, but you can do this. And this is a huge opportunity for you to still support the team and cheer people on, but in a much safer way.
Absolutely. I'll encourage our coaches to put it in their parent meeting agenda and hand that out to, to our parents. And maybe I'll work with the N to maybe push it, an email out as we're starting their winter activities here. So that's a good recommendation. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the return to learn update in Winter Athletics and Activities?
Someone.
Second.
I have a motion second. Board Member Parker?
Aye.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
Board Member Baker?
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey? And Board Member Mickelson?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Casey. I would just like to remind the public that the virtual academy applications, if you aren't in it currently, I believe tomorrow is the deadline, if you would like to switch from in-person to online. I think an email is going out tonight to families on that. And that the open enrollment deadline is December, is going to happen on December 1st. You can do it this year for the first time online or in person, and an email went out on that.
Just not a deadline, but it opens up.
Oh, it opens. Thank you. So that's the date that it starts is December 1st. I'm sorry. It, it happens, but everybody likes to go first, so they get their timestamp on that. So that will be both online and in-person. And anything else for the good?
No school on Wednesday or Thursday or Friday this week, so.
Good reminder. So for the Thanksgiving. Great. Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
I have a motion second. Board Member Parker?
Aye.
Board Member Ryder?
Aye.
Board Member Baker?
Aye.
Board Member Tulkey? And Board Member Mickelson?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. I don't know who that is. It's not the one that came that one time. Yeah, yeah. I know when we mess up, she might be a teacher. That was really nice.